Spiraling platforms are good. Okay. Why do we have to wait till Valerie signs in? Oh, okay. Oh, okay. It's being... Wait, is... Do you want me to go live on CompTms? Right now? Just to check it? Oh, okay. Okay, I'm gonna head up there in a couple minutes.
We might as well get started. Good morning, everyone. It's nine o'clock so we're gonna call to order the board of supervisors meeting for July 25th. Madam Kirk, if you could call the role for the nine o'clock agenda.
Yes, good morning. Let the record reflect all supervisors are present with supervisor Lopez and supervisor Askew joining us shortly.
Okay, and then we're going to additions or corrections for closed session by county council.
There are none today, Chair.
Okay. Today on closed session, we have agenda items one A through C. This is a time for the public to make any comments, public comments on closed session items. So there's nobody with in chambers, anybody online?
There's one hand raised, Christian Snyder.
All right, we'll give him two minutes.
Good morning.
Morning.
I think, I don't know, it might be the last item on the agenda. There were supposed to be papers for the public to inspect, but I couldn't find any. You know, I came to you guys and I've tried to offer settlement solutions so I could just move on with my life and can't say I didn't try, right? And part of the reasons that I've shown up to these meetings is because, you know, I needed to see who was going to recuse themselves from this actual vote. And, you know, I have pretty specific feelings that, you know, Chris Lopez should recuse himself on any vote that's taken on me as well as former supervisor Phillips. But what I was surprised to learn was that Susan Moore, who is Mary Adams' personal secretary, is the wife of, sorry, not the wife, the sister of Archie Warren. And the aunt to his children. And it kind of has me a little bit speechless that not only when this was going on in 2018, when the county was filing slap motions against the DSA based on Archie and them being on TV. Why Mary Adams has never said anything or accused herself at all from any of these issues? This is a clear, clear conflict of interest. Especially if you voted to forgive them for their legal expenses. That would be gifting your personal assistant's family money.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody else online? Okay, seeing none, then we're gonna recess to go into closed session and we'll be back at 10:30 AM. Thank you, everyone.
Oh, sorry. I didn't hear that. Um, can you say that again? Oh, okay. Yeah, let's do that right now. That one's good.
You guys' mic is hot.
Good. Good.
Mic number three.
Good.
Mic number four test.
Good.
Mic number five test.
Good.
Mic number twelve.
Good.
Mic number seven.
Good.
Mic number ten.
Good.
Mic number nine.
Good.
Clark's mic.
Good.
While this mic test.
That one's good. Thank you.
Right, we're running a little bit behind here this morning. We're going to reconvene the Monterey County Board of Supervisors meeting and we'll start with our clerk calling the rules.
Good morning. Let the record reflect all supervisors are present.
And next we'll go to our interpreter Diego Celis to make his Spanish language announcement.
Muy buenos días. Mi nombre es Diego Celis. Soy intérprete inglés y español, español e inglés para el día de hoy. Si usted está planeando hacer un comentario y necesita servicio de intérprete, por favor, habla lento. por favor, hablar lenta y suficientemente fuerte para que yo le escuche. Favor hacer una pausa al final de sus oraciones para asegurarse de que tengo la oportunidad de interpretarle. Muchas gracias.
Next is our pledge of allegiance. So I want to see if Supervisor Chris Lopez could lead us today and if everyone can rise, please.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Lopez. Now we'll go to additions or corrections by the clerk.
Yes, there's a correction to items number nine point one through nine point five under appointments. All appointment terms are to end on October thirty first, twenty twenty five and not November first, twenty twenty five. Also, to remove item number twenty five under consent calendar at Medical Center, the item will be removed from the agenda and brought back at a later time. And there's a correction to item number thirty seven and under the consent calendar for the Health Department. There was a revised board report received. And lastly, there's a correction to item number fifty four under consent calendar general government or revised attachment favors was received.
Thank you very, very much. And this meeting today is our last in about for the next month. We'll be, we have our summer recess and so our next meeting for the public won't be till Tuesday, August twenty second. So we're gonna continue on the agenda. We're gonna go to ceremony resolutions. We have items two through four. Any questions or comments on resolutions? Seeing none, is there any comments from the public on any of these items two through four? Seeing none, if I could entertain a motion?
Some may have to.
Okay, moved by Ask You Second by Lopez.
And Chair, I'm sorry, there are two hands raised.
Oh, there is, okay. Let's go to those comments before we take a vote on the motion to approve.
And sorry, they, they put them down.
Okay, they're probably waiting for public comments, general public comments. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, motion carries five zero. We're going out to appointments. Oh, sorry about that. I totally forgot. I want to rush through. I think there's a couple of presentations today by Supervisor Ask You, just one. Okay, we'll pass it over to you. Thank you.
Right. I'd like to invite Stacy Andrews from The Village Project and anyone else who you from The Village Project you'd like to have join us today. And, and we have a resolution. And we do this one every year and it's, I think it's important and we wanted to take a moment just to acknowledge it and celebrate. But July twenty twenty three is National Minority Mental Health Awareness Month. And we're gonna proclaim that here in Monterey County. And, and I wanted to just read a few of the statements from this. Because when we talk about mental health and when we talk about mental health for any community, there is stigma and it is, it can be a challenging thing to talk about, to own, to acknowledge the realities and challenges that we face personally, that our communities face, that our families face, and the work that The Village Project is doing every day to take that stigma away and make sure that we all have safe places to have these conversations and to acknowledge what it means to, 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 to take care of our mental health and to be well and healthy and happy and successful in this, in this, in this world and in this life. So Minority Mental Health Month is observed each July to bring awareness to the unique struggles that racial and ethnic minority communities face regarding mental illness in the United States. We understand that mental health is an important part of overall health and well-being and that there are a number of factors that contribute to the mental health disparities experienced by minority communities, including discrimination, poverty, and lack of access to mental health care. We know that minority communities are disproportionately affected by mental health challenges and that The Village Project and Seaside with founder Mel Mason and Regina Mason are really doing some incredible work to reach out into the community, to create spaces for conversation, for learning, and to acknowledge that we, this is not something that's a one-off thing. We're all struggling. And together we can build community and build our, our, our strength and resiliency and our health. And so I want to acknowledge Stacy Andrews, who's our new executive director for The Village Project with this resolution. If you'd like to make any comments about the work that you guys are doing.
Well, thank you for continuing to recognize this month. The work that The Village Project have done over the last fifteen years has really also honored B.B. Moore Campbell and her work around systems change within the mental health field and breaking down the barriers to access for individuals, you know, BIPOC LGBTQ plus community, specifically the African American community. So thank you so much. Jake Osborne is our program manager for our Elevate Youth Program. He, his program really works around systems change and teaching our youth and young adults how to use their voices, what systems are in place that really impact them in their lives. So something like this is very relevant to the work that he does. We actually have some of our students watching back at our after-school program for the summer. So they kind of get to see a supervisor meeting in action and just the wonderful work that you all do. Thank you.
Well, thank you both for being here. We'll give them a round of applause and we'll take a quick photograph here. And I think we reconvene back after kids are back at school, but we welcome all of your students to come visit us here at a board meeting. And we'll find an opportunity to get them in front of the podium so they can talk about some of their experiences. Because I think their voices are important to the decisions that we're making here. And thank you again for the work that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And as Chair of the Board, really want to commend The Village Project for the work that you do. These issues of stigma and being a taboo about talking about mental health within our families, within our neighborhoods, within our communities is a real issue, real struggle. And I really appreciate the work that you do, being a voice and advocating for, for our communities to be aware of it and to know that there's resources there, that there's organizations willing to help our families, our young people through, through this. So I really want to commend you for your work that you do day in and day out for Monterey County. So muchas gracias. Thank you.
And then through the chair, we just have a second resolution honoring Mel Mason on his retirement as co-founder and clinical director of The Village Project. We, we've had Mel Mason here many, many times. We're gonna be presenting this to Mr. Mason at a future event. But I just wanted to acknowledge and thank, if you can pass our appreciation along. Thank you.
Congratulations to Mel Mason on his well-deserved retirement. Okay, we're moving on to appointments. These are items five through nine point five, right? We didn't make any changes there. Any questions or comments on, on appointments from the board? Any comments from the public on these appointments? I don't see anybody in chambers, anybody online on appointments.
I see one hand raised, but it's Sheriff Nieto. I don't know if she's here on the point. Oh, she took it down.
Chair, okay.
So Mr. Chair, I'll give you a motion for five through nine point four. Nine point five says we select a member, so.
Oh, yes. I had the same question, right?
So five through nine four, I'll give you a motion up front.
Okay. Let's get those out of the way then. Supervisor Ask You, we're gonna do a vote on nine point five separately because that has to do with you. These other have recommended appointments and a motion has been made with the second from five through nine point four. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, motion carries five zero. Now we're on nine point five. This is to appoint a, one member of the Board of Supervisors to serve on Santa Cruz. Monterey, Merced, San Benito, Mariposa, Managed Medical Care Commission with a term ending on December thirty first, twenty twenty three. Our current representative has been Supervisor Ask You. And you want to speak about your interest to continue to serve?
Yeah, thank you. So we just appointed, so the Monterey County has been member of the tri-county Monterey, Santa Cruz, and Merced Medical Managed Care Plan, the Central California Alliance for Health. We've had one appointee, we've, Monterey County has had seven representatives on this board going back for many, many years. We're adding in, right now, part of this action is we're adding in Mariposa County and San Benito County to the Alliance for Health. This has been an incredibly lengthy and challenging, dynamic process to do so. So as a result, we reduced the number of members that Monterey County had on the board from seven to five as part of the ordinance that we adopted last November. We are still waiting for the final approval from the state to add Mariposa and San Benito County. So once that goes into effect, our new five-member board will then be in effect. I've been representing the ally, Monterey County on the alliance since taking office and had been very involved in the Alliance for Health for the previous twelve years as a staffer. The, the Alliance for Health provides care, medical insurance effectively Medi-Cal to a third of our adults here in Monterey County and about half of our children. And about seventy percent of the babies born are to, their health care is provided through Medi-Cal. Medi-Cal is undergoing significant changes through CalAim, implementation of expanded benefits. And it would be my honor to continue representing this board and our county, our county health clinics, our county health hospitals, and all of the many, many thousands of Medi-Cal members who rely on the Alliance for their health insurance.
All right, let's go to, if, if there's no other comments from board, let's go to the public for any comments on this appointment on nine point five. Okay, seeing none, I will bring this back for the board of Supervisors Lopez.
Move appointment of Supervisor Ask You.
Is there a second? Supervisor's second by, Supervisor Adams, I see your mic on. All right, Supervisor Church.
Sorry.
All right, there's been a motion, a second for Supervisor Ask You to be reappointed. And thank you for your leadership on here. I know you've been very active and so that's very much appreciated. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, motion carries five zero.
Through the chair, I may just acknowledge, because we've reduced now our membership from seven representatives to five, I just want to acknowledge that Dr. Harris and our former Health Clinic Director, Julie Edgcombe, have been incredible, incredible voices for Monterey County. Because we don't have seven seats anymore, they'll no longer be serving Representative of Monterey County. But I just want to acknowledge and thank them for their incredible leadership, for bringing issues forward proactively, for helping the alliance be the incredible organization that it is. And I do, I commit to continuing to stay in touch with them to make sure that their voices continue to be heard at the alliance board. Thank you.
Thank you for highlighting and recognizing their outstanding leadership on this for numerous years now. Okay, we're going to now consent items. These are approval of consent items number twenty-two through seventy point one. Any questions or comments on, or want to pull any items from consent? I don't see any from the board supervisor.
A comment on forty-seven and I actually want to pull seventy.
Okay, pull number seventy. Anyone else? Okay, let's go to number forty-seven then.
Sure.
Let me just tell the public what.
It's the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Report.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just, given you read this, I, I feel there's a lot of important, significant information and guidance and direction in it. And I, I think in the future it would be really good maybe to have a presentation to the board onto this. We do have some other items and that come up regarding economic direction and that we should, we should, we should take. And this lists, just lists a, a lot of good factual information and, and suggestions of what, where we should be going. And I'm just feel that getting, seeing it kind of lost in the consent calendar doesn't really give it proper justice.
Okay, we'll, we'll make that request to Mr. Avon to bring that back and have a more thorough discussion on that. I know he's listening. Anyone else? Okay, and we'll just make number seventy, we'll pull that for a separate vote. Any members of public want to comment on consent? Seeing none, then we'll entertain a motion to approve items twenty-two through seventy point one, except item seventy. For that will be a separate vote. Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
I'll move by Adams, second by Lopez. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those against, motion carries five zero. Number seventy is to consider adoption of a resolution supporting designation of the proposed United States Bicycle Route ninety-five through the county of Monterey. You want to speak to why you want to?
Yeah, my, great idea. I'm behind this concept. My only concern is this one talks about bringing bikes over Porter Bridge in Paharo. And I know we're doing work on the, soon on the G twelve segment through Paharo, but there's not going to be bike lanes put over G twelve, I mean, G twelve, excuse me, Porter Bridge. And I, I just think it's, I'm just concerned about the safety of it. I mean, there's, it seemed like it would have been better to direct things down a little bit further west towards Thurwacker Bridge and it could even come back up through Traffton around there. On a big, get back up on Sleenish Road, for example, or there's, there's another route, even there's a couple of routes down that way, but you know, there, there, you know, there's a lot, if we're going to be promoting this for outsiders to come through and they don't know the roads and they're gonna be crossing a really heavily trafficked bridge, perhaps with forty or fifty bicyclists. I, I just have concerns about safety on that.
Okay, anyone else? Supervisor Ask You.
Yeah, I just, I know the staff has done a lot of work and we've been actively involved in looking at how to support this initiative forward. Most of the folks who are, who are using these routes are seasoned bicyclists. These are the folks that you see riding along Highway one through Big Sur. So I think that the commitment would be to continue, of course, moving towards, you know, across all of our bike routes, safety and signage. But this would be one step towards helping us outline where these routes are going to be so that we can focus on those kinds of ongoing, you know, thoughtful improvements. But we actually have, later in the, we'd submitted a board referral to ask that we take this action because I do feel like it is important and, and in a way that Monterey County can be a part of this statewide regional effort to, to bring people through and to start identifying what are the routes, what are those paths that are, that we're, that we're talking about. So I definitely hear your concerns and bicycle safety is, I, I personally don't ride my bike on the street because I don't feel confident enough to do so. But as we move towards, as we move to, the path towards protected bicycle lane starts with identifying the routes that, that people can take. So I'm, I'm supportive and I've asked this to come forward and we've been working with staff on it, but appreciate, and I think I just want to note your concerns.
Yeah, if I can just follow up here, Mr. Chair, I just, again, my concern is there is no bicycle lane on that bridge and there will not be one constructed. And, you know, was there any consideration about going around it on a, on another bridge? I mean, there's also, there's also Murphy's further up too.
That's pretty out of the way though.
Yeah.
And, and Murphy's Road, if you, if you go on the Santa Cruz County side, is one of the worst roads in Santa Cruz County. We, we fixed our side. Santa Cruz County hasn't lived up to their promise that they said they were gonna do this year. Anything else?
No, I mean, I'll, I, I would just like that really looked at a little closer as a possibility. I understand we're specifically referring to Porter Bridge in this, but I, I do really have concerns about it.
Yes, Supervisor Adams. Okay, I, I just wanted to say, I, I support this, obviously with this designation, it's gonna take some time. Hopefully that will help us make some improvements on the Paharo Bridge to get some lanes. I just know that a lot of progress has been done on the Watsonville side, my hometown, where there was very few bike lanes and that city really made a commitment to make it more bike friendly. And now you see a lot of the restripping of a lot of the streets, including Rodriguez, just on the other side of the Paharo Bridge. There's been a lot of improvements and investments. And I know on the Paharo side, now Tamsi just got a grant to do just that too, make some sidewalk and bike lane improvements and that's going to be implemented soon. And that maybe that's something we could talk to about Tamsi, if that's something that they can include in their, expand the scope of their project to include at least some bike safety lanes. On, I know that had to be a partnership with Santa Cruz County because it's, it's halfway through that bridge. But I think the designation would help us make some improvements there to address the very concerns you're talking about.
Yeah. I mean, I'm willing to approve this if we can maybe give some direction to Tamsi to.
Yes, we could include that in motion for sure.
Yes.
Exactly. Okay, any other comments on this Supervisor Lopez?
My, my thoughts are exactly that, an approval with a request that we just reanalyze the use of that one bridge I'm good with as long as we, you'd share, give our colleague that to have that, give him a bolster that position.
Exactly, an agreement. Now let's hear from the public on this item. United States Bicycle Route Proposal to Go Through Monterey County. See no comments then? You want to make the motion Supervisor Church?
Yes, I'll make the motion to approve with, with the direction given that we, we have, we, we request that Tamsi look into some safety matters onto this.
To improvements on the Paharo Bridge.
Yes.
Okay, okay, second by Ask You. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those against, motion carries five zero. Thank you for raising those concerns Supervisor. Okay, now we're going to general public comments. This is a time for the public to make any comments on items not on today's agenda. When we'll start with those in chambers and we'll provide up to two minutes, please. And yes, if our security could help, ma'am? And yes, if our security could help, ma'am? We need help providing, um, an accommodation there to lower the microphone. Hey, do you want to speak on this side to the desk over here? Yes, yeah, and we can move that chair to you. Please, thank you. Thank you, that we could have a better view of you as well.
Hi, my name is Miriam Smith, two diocese. I am coming about a belief and a feeling that I have for some support. We, uh, the, the highway patrol in Monterey County, their state, I know, but they're in Monterey County and they don't have video cameras. The, um, the, I'm, I have a, uh, something I need help with because of the, they are able to send information along with other police officers, send information up to, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
They are able to send information up to the DA's office and the DA office don't properly investigate the information and, and it's sent to the courts. And stuff that should be thrown out by the DA before it even gets to the court, taxpayers' money is being wasted on in Monterey County. And vulnerable people like myself and others are constantly held answer to abusive use of force and things that are happening within our county. And I would like to know how to go about getting the proper, getting to the proper people to make the right complaints and how to go about getting cameras. And I'd like to get some support on highway patrol or to operate in Arwood County. It's just unfair that so much wasted taxpayers' money is going toward criminalizing people that are not criminals for petty stuff. And I'm here to speak for not just myself, but for so many other people about this matter. And it is time that we start looking at it. I know we're a conservative county. I know we haven't cared about this kind of stuff. And I've been here all my life, so as much. And I'm here to speak up. There will be people coming behind me. And we need to get some support with the Board of Supervisors in how to go forth.
Thank you, Ms. Smith, for speaking up and expressing your concerns.
Thank you.
We'll now go to our next member of the public.
Okay, good morning. Um, I'm Eloise Shim and I'm a Monterey County resident. I'm, I want to make a comment about the Health Department with regard to the mental health services in the schools. Boards of Education have sued proprietors of mental health services in public schools because they have decreased the education resources. In practice, counselors, child and teen mental health professionals have intruded on families and their children with inept uncalled for treatments and interactions with students causing disruption and upheaval in families. These practices, these practices in schools go above and beyond the reasonable cause for intrusion with not only inept so-called professional, but also the use of their authority in malicious ways to displace and indoctrinate innocent and non-suspecting students and their families. As the school year 2023-24 commences, there should be a mechanism to prevent this kind of interference in a child's learning experience when parents who can't afford to send their children to a private school or to homeschool them have no option but to be essentially victimized by it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other speakers, comments for items not on today's agenda? I don't see anybody else in chambers coming forward, so let's go to those online.
Esther Malkin. Good morning, everybody. Esther Malkin from Monterey County Renters United. I'm calling in because I want to bring to your attention that we have a renter issue that is getting an update hopefully. And I want to urge you all to support SB 567, which is going to address some of the loopholes in AB 1482. Unfortunately, they removed changing that 10% annual maximum increase. And I want to address that because, you know, renters are valuable members of all your districts and their voices need to be considered. During the pandemic, they, many of the low-income workers that we all rely on were rebranded as essential. But unfortunately, they have been taken back to their original state and they're just low-income workers. We all need them in our, in our region to function, yet their voices are not being heard at the county level. I encourage all of you to find out how many renters are in your districts and how you can engage with them, especially as we come closer to the expiration of AB 1482, which only has six years left on the, on the books. And individual jurisdictions are going to be the ones that are going to have to work on protecting those renters. Renters should be considered more than just income generators for the, the rental property owners. And we absolutely have to give them voice at the county level. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else?
Christian Snyder.
Good morning again. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, just to follow up on the comments in, for closed session. So Supervisor Lopez has to recuse himself from votes, even though I know he has not. And I'm going to give you the reasons. So I wrote a complaint against Supervisor Lopez to the FPPC in 2018. After they invoke, opened an investigation, he voted on filing a slap motion against me. Now it turns out that Supervisor Phillips did in fact break the law with Patty Worth and he would have had to pay a personal fine, I believe, of $5,000 per violation, which totaled, I believe, about $17,000 on three different occasions of sub-vendor payments that he didn't declare with Patty Worth. The second issue is that Patty Worth is a major witness in this upcoming defamation trial. As she was there, one of three commanders entered in and took the books into the back room. Last point is that Chris Lopez endorsed Joe Moses as a candidate for sheriff while voting on these issues. So there's another way to look at this, aside from, from Mary Adams' issue, is that you also have Chris Lopez, who it appears voted to gift money to a candidate who was running for office. So this is my public comment that I intend to be filing complaints or amending my litigation to include these other aspects that quite frankly should have been addressed years ago. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next person.
Phone number ending is 705.
Whereas, uh, phone number 705, you're up.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Yeah, uh, thank you. Good morning supervisors. I'm very alarmed at the behavior and abuse of law. The California Department of Fish and Wildlife is exhibiting about the cutting down of more than 200 eucalyptus trees at Elkhorn Slough. And I'm reading from Nina Beatty's comments on that. "The decision made by HCD Planning Chief Craig Stephens on this plan, May 17th, appears to be unlawful. I request that the decision be voided and a hearing scheduled to review this project." On May 4th, 2023, the Monterey County Weekly published a legal notice on page 50. It stated, "Any comments or requests that the application be scheduled for public hearing must be received in writing in the Office of the County of Monterey Housing and Community Development by 5:00 PM, Tuesday, May 16th." And so she filed such a request with substantive issues and no hearing was held and she was not notified of any hearing. And then the next thing you know, they're just going ahead and rubber stamping. And we need every tree now and we can't mitigate with tiny little saplings. So I emailed all the supervisors there and I'm hoping that you will revisit this because this is such an important issue. The Angel Island lesson we learned was when they cut all those eucalyptus trees down, a huge brush fire broke out. They couldn't stop it until they came to the last remaining six acres of eucalyptus. And it was the fog drip from their leaves that stopped the fire. And so now they're planning to plant prairie grass there and cut down these trees. They're creating the same scenario as it, what happened in Angel Island and all under the, um, under the name of invasive species, which was created in part by Monsanto a long time ago. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
No more hands raised.
Okay, no more. Any last call for public comments for items not on today's agenda? So I don't see anyone, so we're going to close public comments and we're going to recess temporarily. The Board of Supervisors meeting to go into the Paharo County Sanitation District. Madam Clerk, can we call the roll for the record?
Yes, let the record reflect all directors are present.
Okay, any additions, corrections to this agenda?
There are none.
Okay, any public comments, general public comments for items not on the Paharo County Sanitation District agenda? See none, then we got one scheduled item. This is us acting as the Board of Directors for the Paharo County Sanitation District, conducting a public hearing regarding delinquent sanitation fees. And to lead us in this presentation is Lynette Redman, our management analyst.
Thank you Chair, Alejo, members of the board. I'm Lynette Redman. I'm Special District's Management Analyst for Public Works Facilities and Parks. And this will be for the special districts. This public hearing addresses delinquent Paharo County Sanitation District customer accounts for the calendar year of 2022. In 1999, the Board of Supervisors adopted ordinances removing sanitation service charges from the tax rolls and provided for monthly billings. Then in 2007, the Board adopted an ordinance establishing the current procedure for collection of delinquent accounts for Paharo County Sanitation District. The procedures include holding, holding an annual public hearing to hear the report of delinquent fees and objections by property owners liable to be assessed for those fees. Monterey One Water provides sewer billing services and submits account data to county staff that is used to prepare the delinquent sewer account reports. Account information on delinquent accounts was updated yesterday afternoon, July 19th, 2023. And you should have a copy of those updates. At the time this report was written, there were unpaid balances for calendar year 2022 on accounts for 57 parcels despite multiple billing notices. 12 of the 57 accounts have been paid, leaving 45 accounts with outstanding balances. That's a total of $30,865.58. $28,165.58 is for sewer fees and $2,700 is for past due account fees. On June 7th and July 11th, 2023, affected property owners were notified by letter that they have past due amounts as of December 31st, 2022 that are subject to be collected through a lien on their property. Notices of this public hearing were mailed not less than 10 days prior to the hearing and was also published in the Monterey County Weekly. Staff receives a small number of calls related to delinquent accounts during the notification process. However, no calls were received contesting any of the delinquent fees. So if there are no questions, county staff is ready to open the public hearing.
Okay, thank you for your concise presentation. Any questions from the board? See none, let's go to public comments. Any comments, any of the residents impacted for these delinquent fees? It's time to come and speak and address the board. Anybody online? Nobody? Pass it back to you. Um, we get closed?
Okay.
Presentation now? Okay.
Yes.
All right, um, so then we just need to have a motion to approve staff's recommendation?
I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
I do just have one question.
Okay.
I, I just, I'm always uncomfortable with this and want to know if there's any kind of defining information on the property owners, so we have an idea of who's being impacted by this. I, anytime, you know, we're putting liens against people's homes, I simply worry, especially looking at the areas where this is taking place. I really worry whether we're jeopardizing people's well-being or livelihood. So I'm sorry Lynette, I should have had, asked you this question earlier.
So we do get calls from customers, you know, throughout the year and especially this time of year. Not, not very many, I would say handful, maybe not more than three or five. And most of them are not opposed to paying their bill. We do get calls for people asking if there's any nonprofits, any organizations that can help. I, I keep an eye out. We've done exhaustive research a couple of years ago on agencies that might be available. From time to time, there, there is somebody, there was, uh, I can't remember the organization, but it was during COVID. And they were helping people with, with their electric and their gas, but they weren't helping people with their sewer bills. So based on my research and my knowledge, I, I haven't been able to find, you know, anybody that offers assistance, payment assistance, unfortunately.
Do you know if anyone has ever actually lost their home based on, you know, not paying this bill?
I, I don't believe so. I've never heard of that.
Okay.
You know, it's hard to say. It could be, you know, an element, you know, in the whole scheme of things of somebody not being able to maintain their home, you know, with, as with other, you know, utilities and property tax. And so it's probably just one of those added expenses that some people struggle with. I mean, that's an assumption, of course. So, but other than that, um, yeah.
Got it.
I don't have any more information.
And there is some recourse, at least they call and, you know, there's some, you know, we try to offer other places where they can get help.
Yeah, yeah. And then, you know, it does go on their property tax bill. And so, you know, that's kind of a cost related to property ownership. But yeah, so once we put it on the tax, the tax rolls, we usually don't hear any more, any more back from, from people.
Thank you so much for that and for the work you do.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. I see no further discussion.
I'll just make a comment. This is a topic that regularly comes up during our meetings in Chular. Even some of the folks on this list are there and they weren't even aware they got monthly billings. For some reason, they don't get them. They thought it just gets paid on their tax bill. So it's just, it's part of the system and the way it works or it doesn't work. And, you know, we're looking for better ways, but I think, I mean, big picture. I mean, you see even the school district is on here, right there at the top of the list. And so it's just getting into the right people sometimes can be challenging, especially in a small town like that. And so this is something that's on the radar and I think most people are aware that it's a challenge. But hopefully we can work through most of those together.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. This was a hearing as part of the process to hear any protests or objections to the report of those property owners liable for these fees. But if there's a further discussion, we could entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Moved by Adams, seconded by?
Second.
By Supervisor Church. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, motion carries five zero. Thank you very much. And we'll adjourn the Paharo County Sanitation District meeting. We will now go reconvene the regular Board of Supervisors meeting. Madam Clerk, can we call the roll for the record?
Yes, good morning. Let the record reflect all supervisors are present.
Okay, now, um, we're going into item 12. This is to accept a report regarding delinquent sanitation fees from those in the Chular area. And we have a presentation, again, by Lynette Redman. Thank you. Please don't go anywhere.
Good after, good morning again. Again, I'm Lynette Redman, Management Analyst for Public Works Facilities and Parks, Special Districts. And this public hearing addresses the link, the Lincoln County Sanitation, delinquent accounts for County Service Area 75 Chular, customer accounts for calendar year 2022. In 1999, the Board of Supervisors adopted ordinances removing sanitation. In 1999, the Board of Supervisors adopted ordinances removing sanitation service charges from the tax rolls and provided for a monthly billing service. In 2004, the Board adopted an ordinance establishing the current procedures for collection of delinquent fees for the CSA. The procedures include holding an annual public hearing to hear the report of delinquent fees and objections by property owners liable to be assessed for those fees. Monterey One Water provides sewer billing services and submits account data to county staff that is used to prepare the delinquent sewer reports. This information was updated yesterday afternoon, July 24th. So at the time of this, this report was written, there were unpaid balances for calendar year 2022 on 20 parcels despite multiple billing notices. As of yesterday, four accounts have been paid in full and partial payments have been made on an additional five accounts, leaving 16 accounts with past due balances. The current outstanding past due amount, including penalty fees, is $15,206.69. Of the 172 CSA 75 Chular sanitation customers, this reflects 9% of the customer base, and it's consistent with previous year's delinquent accounts. On June 17th and July 11th, 2023, affected property owners were notified by letter that they have past due amounts as of December 31st, 2022 that are subject to collection through a lien on their property. Notices of this public hearing were mailed not less than 10 days prior to the hearing and was also published in the Monterey County Weekly. Staff receives a small number of calls related to delinquent accounts during this notification. However, no calls were received contesting any of the fees. I also wanted to mention that, and so I've been doing this for about nine years now, and we've seen a consistent decrease over the years. So I would say the first three to four years, we had much higher delinquent fee rates, two or three times what we're looking at today, and we have seen a reduction. And so hopefully, some of those folks that were unaware, hopefully, they're getting their bill now. So other than that, if there are no questions, I'm ready to open the public hearing.
Great. Any questions on this, the Chular sanitation area? Seeing none, any comments from the public? This is a hearing for the public to make any protests or discuss any of these fees, protests or objections to the report filed of those property owners liable for delinquent sanitation fees. Seeing none, then we'll close the public hearing. Thank you very much, and we'll entertain a motion now. Supervisor, oh, you want to speak?
Just going to make the motion to accept.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, motion carries five zero. Thank you very much. Ms. Redman, keep up the good work. We're going to item 13 now, the last item on the agenda. This is to receive the 2022, last year's annual County of Monterey Crop and Livestock Report from the Ag Commissioner's Office, and which also now includes a cannabis crop report. We have a presentation by Richard Ordóñez, Chief Deputy Ag Commissioner. Oh, oh, I'm just following what says on the agenda. Good to see you. Yes. Thank you. So Mr. Juan Iidalgo, glad to have you here and look forward to your presentation.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Chair Alejo, members of the board, TAO de la Rosa. It's a pleasure to be here, Juan Iidalgo Agricultural Commissioner. It gives me great pleasure to announce the release of the 2022 Monterey County Crop Report. This is the highlight of our agricultural industry. It showcases trends and values for the different commodities that we grow here in Monterey County. And today I have a short presentation that highlights some of the major commodities and their values for 2022. Next slide, please. And as is always a tradition with the Monterey County Ag Commissioner's Office, we always have a theme for our crop reports. And this year's theme is rooted in serving our community. And the highlight of the theme is talking about the Agricultural Commissioners Office and the programs that we have in place to serve our communities, to protect agriculture and our environment. And to give you some history about agricultural commissioners, they have been around for almost more than 140 years. They began back in 1881 as the Board of Horticultural Commissioners, which was created by California legislation back then. We have, we had 11 counties that had Horticultural Commissioners in place back in 1881. And we did have some of their main programs back in those days was regulating plant quarantine pests, responding to weed and insect and other, and rodent infestations. They also upheld quality standards for fruits and vegetables back in those days. In 1919, the state of California created the Department of Food and Agriculture, and its main goal was to protect agriculture and make sure that we had a healthy food supply in our state. And then in 1929, Horticultural Commissioners became Agricultural Commissioners. And then you move forward several more decades, and in 1988, officials of weights and measures merged with agricultural commissioners. And so I also carry the honor of the title of Sealer of Weights and Measures for our county. Next slide, please. And just to give you a sense for some of the programs from the Agricultural Commissioners Office, we have our fruit and vegetable standardization program, making sure that there are quality standards in the field for the various commodities produced here in our county, and making sure that any packaging and labeling requirements for commodities follow state regulations. We have weights and measures, which ensures equity in the marketplace, not only for consumers, but also businesses, making sure that commercial devices such as grocery store scales are accurate and protect consumers. We also do package inspections to make sure that the net quantitative statements on packaged commodities are accurate and that they have the proper labeling as required by federal regulations. Our PEX exclusion program is a first line of defense when it comes to keeping invasive pests out of our county. We have a team of staff that inspect packages coming from other areas of the state, plant material and fruits that may come from other states to make sure that when they arrive here in our county, that we're not receiving unwanted pests that can create an issue for our growers and also for our environment and landscape and home gardens. We have our pesticide use enforcement program. We have a team of staff that makes sure that our growers are using pesticides safely and effectively, whether it be applications in agricultural, commercial farms, or structural settings. We want to make sure that our growers and any pesticide users are following the required state regulations and that they're doing their part to be able to train their staff, their workers, and also keeping our community safe. And pest detection and management is a key program. This is for monitoring of exotic pests that do not exist here in California or in our nation. Some examples include exotic fruit flies, Japanese beetle, which we don't have in the state, spongy moth, which is a detrimental pest that can have some serious impacts in our environment, destroying trees and many of our forest areas that we have in the county. So being able to get ahead of this pest by having traps spread out throughout the county and having a team that regularly checks on these traps is important for the protection of all of our communities. And it allows for quick eradication of the pests before they get out of control, potentially costing millions of dollars in damages, and also potentially putting in place and making it difficult for our growers to be able to ship commodities out of our area due to strict quarantines that tend to come into play when we find invasive pests. So that's just the highlight of just some of the programs with my office. Next slide, please. And just to give you an overall sense of the importance of agriculture in California, we are the number one agricultural state. Our growers produce 400 different commodities. That is absolutely phenomenal. No other state in the nation produces the level of commodities, the quality, and just the variety that we see here in California. And our growers here in Monterey County are a big part of that. California's gross values for agriculture, the latest figures is a $51.1 billion industry. The next closest state is Iowa. And, you know, one of the things to kind of highlight and keep in mind is that California produces a third of the nation's vegetables and three quarters of the fruits and nuts. Now, that's a tremendous amount of just amazing production that we have here in our state. And like I said, Monterey County is right at the top of the top producing states here in our California. Next slide, please. And just to highlight the county of Monterey, based on the latest figures from USDA, we have over 1,100 farms, 1.3 million acres of farmland, 361 acres of cropland, over 830 acres of pasture land, and more than 294,000 irrigated acres. And these are some of the major production areas in our county. As many of us know, the Salinas Valley, very well known for its incredible production. We have the Pajaro Valley area. We have the coastal areas of Moss Landing and Marina, and then we have production along the Carmel Valley as well. Next slide, please. And so to bring it back closer to home, for 2022, the gross production value of commodities in Monterey County was $4.6 billion. That's a 13% increase compared to the 2021 value of $4.1 billion. This is just incredible to see that level of increase in our commodities. And there are a lot of factors that play into that. High consumer demand for our commodities, and also just market prices that can sometimes fluctuate from one year to the next. But last year was an exceptional year for some of our commodities when it came to market value. Next slide, please. And just to point out some of the top commodities in our county, once again, strawberries are number one, just like in 2021, at $958 million. And next, we have leaf lettuces at $842 million, followed by head lettuce at $546 million, broccoli at $519 million, and cauliflower at $216 million. And those are the top five commodities. Celery, wine grape, spinach, nursery stock, and Brussels sprouts had some really high demand last year in 2022 and commanded some excellent prices, and they round off the top 10 commodities in our county. And just to put it into perspective, when you take leafy vegetables and vegetables altogether, they account for 70% of the total gross production value in our county. There's no, this is the reason why we are referred to as the salad bowl of the world, because our production when it comes to leafy vegetables is incredible. And about 25% of the remaining production is primarily due to strawberry production here in our county. Next slide, please. As is always the case, one of the nice things about the crop report is to look at trends and challenges and to track some of those trends over time. Every year presents a new set of challenges for our growers. Not only are growers at the mercy of the weather, but, you know, consumer demand and market prices can have an impact on their ability to produce a valuable crop here in our county. Just some highlights on wine grapes. We saw a decrease in 2022 from 2021. The value dropped to $173 million for 2022 compared to $218 million in 2021. One of the reasons behind that is just some of the unsustainable weather that we have been seeing in our county in the last few years. If you recall, last year, around late August into early September, we had some unusually warm weather that stuck around in our area for quite a while, and that actually had an impact on the yields of wine grapes here in our county. And that is part of the reason why some of the value went down a little bit. We also had some vineyards. We have some older vineyards that are going to begin to get replanted. And so there's some curtailing back of some of that planted vineyards at this point, too. For lettuce, impatience necrotic spot virus, INSV, continues to be a big issue for our growers. It's created some serious damage the last three years, where growers have, you know, suffered some very severe losses in the fields. However, high consumer demand for lettuces, you know, increased the price, caused the price to go up last year. And so we can see here for leaf lettuce, there was a 13% increase compared to 2021 to $842 million. And for head lettuce, there was a 21% increase compared to 2021 to $546 million. And then the last commodity I wanted to point out on trends and challenges is cannabis. As we have all heard, the industry has been suffering for at least close to the last two years. Low pricing throughout the state has definitely had a significant impact, causing some cannabis operations to close down. And certainly, our county has not been spared from that. And you can see in the value here, there was a 54% drop from 2021 in the value of cannabis production in our county. It went down from $618 million in 2021 to our $283 million for that 2022 crop report. Next slide, please. And organic production, it's a key part of agricultural production in our county. And just to highlight how important it is, we have over 81,000 acres registered organic here in Monterey County, and the industry is over a billion dollars worth for our county alone. So we're, as you can imagine, one of the top producing agricultural, organic counties in the state. Next slide, please. And to kind of put it into perspective, just different commodities that were grown here in 2022 resulted in exports of over 370 million pounds of fresh fruits and vegetables to 35 different countries around the world in 2022. So our little county, not so little, plays a big role in not only supplying fresh fruits and vegetables to our own communities and our own state, but also to the rest of the nation and the world. Next slide, please. And I just wanted to take a minute to thank farmers, ranchers, boards, commissions, and agricultural associations for their time and dedication and their collaboration in helping us to collect all of the data that is key to be able to compile this report on an annual basis without their assistance. It would be an uphill task and completely impossible to put this report together. But lastly, I want to thank my team for their dedication and effort and all of their work that went into producing the 2022 crop report this year. Graham, Rich, Rony, Bruce, and the rest of the team, and Shayla, and the rest of our team that had the time to review and make sure that the values were correct and followed up with our growers to get information and updates. And next slide, please. And that is the end of my presentation, and I want to thank your board for your time today, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ag Commissioner Iidalgo. I know you had a press conference this morning. I don't know if there's any other ag partners that are here today that would like to say anything on the crop report? I don't know if any came.
I don't see anybody here in the chambers.
I wanted to provide that opportunity, though. But I know you had an opportunity to release this and take questions from our local reporters. So let's go to Supervisor Lopez first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So first off, you know, looking through this, thank you for compiling this report, and congratulations to your entire staff for getting us these figures so quickly. I think my one concern, and I don't want to start a fight, but what's wrong with Canada? Canada, their consumption of our products is down by 60% year over year. What happened there? Was there a trade battle or something? Do we know? Do we know?
Not so much. There can be a little particular about some of their quarantine regulations for exporting some of our commodities. Light brown apple moth is a perfect example of that. That's a pest that we found over a decade ago and has been deregulated by USDA and a lot of our states here in the nation. But Canada continues to put some barriers for our growers to be able to export some of those commodities out there to their country. But we're hopeful that, you know, hopefully in the next couple of years, I know USDA continues to negotiate with them to kind of loosen up some of the barriers to trade.
Just so if anybody missed it, they went from, as a partner, 198 million total pounds down to 70. So that's a massive difference. I also, when I went through the report, found the change in the yield production on wine grapes. The other one that stood out to me was lemons. We're almost doubling acreage, and the lemons haven't traditionally been a major commodity for us. And I know there's one particular vineyard that left production and is going into lemons in the third district. And I'm curious, is that making up the bulk of that? Or are we seeing that as a larger trend?
I think that might be a small trend that we're seeing. There's a little bit of a hidden secret that it just so happens that growers are beginning to find out that we have a unique weather to be able to produce lemons in our county. Traditionally, citrus fruits have stayed in the valley and in some of the southern counties. But we're beginning to see that folks are beginning to take advantage of just the great climate that we have here for lemon production.
And I know we used to have asparagus on the list, and it's sad to see that it no longer makes the list at all. I know it's mostly left to Mexico in terms of production for obvious reasons, but a little bit to Stockton, but the vast majority went to Mexico. But looking at the reduction in artichokes as well, is there a reason for that? I know some had worried that it could maybe potentially be a host for INSV or something over wintering. Is that a concern?
I haven't heard that as being too much of a concern. Supervisor, sometimes there's rotation of the plant, and that can result in lowering of the production from one year to the next and what is planted. So it may have to do just with some of the agricultural practices as they determine how much to plant for next year. And the plants are perennial, so you can actually move them and dig them up from one spot and actually plant them somewhere else, which is quite unique for that commodity.
Well, overall, thank you. And I know in your list of everyone, you thank the one group that we also have to recognize is the farm workers. We wouldn't be able to put together this report and thank them because most of the products on this list cannot be machine harvested. And I think that's another thing that makes us extremely unique. It's the beautiful people that make up the real tapestry of this community that get out there every single day and give us the opportunity to, for me at least, and for others on this board, to say that we represent the salad bowl of the world, which is really unique. And so thank you for the work and for all the acknowledgement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Adams, next.
Thank you. Thank you very much for this really helpful report. It's very interesting. I always look forward to getting it because it really, I think, is a predictive measure for our whole economic basis in Monterey County. I had a couple of questions. You may not know the answer just right off the bat, but I was curious. I know that last year we ranked number five in the top producing areas of the state. Do you know where our rank was last year?
Last year, we were number four.
We were four, okay. And then, so that was for the area. And then in the agricultural gross production value, we were four. And do you know where we were last year?
We're in the same spot, Supervisor Adams. We're the number four producing county when it comes to value as well. We only fall behind some of the bigger counties in the valley, Fresno to Larry, Kern. Those counties tend to kind of fight it out for the number one, two, and three spots every year. But I'm sure someday we might get even closer to where they are.
Thank you. That was my other question, what counties rank one, two, and three? But it sounds like it's Fresno, Tulare, and Kern.
Yes.
About it, yeah. And I was saddened to read the, you know, seeing it in print, the cannabis report. And that's on our shoulders. And was very disappointed for us that it's not gone well. But I really thank you. And echoing Supervisor Lopez, I really thank the workers, not just your staff, but all the workers in the fields who provide this bounty for us in our county. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Church.
Yes, thank you for this report. I don't recall what last year's looked like. I have seen these in the past. And at least what I'm seeing right here, this is a really nice report. It breaks down into detail, lists out a whole range of products. It's easy to read. It's colorful. It's just really, really a good report. I, you know, even with the decline in some production, such as in grapes and cannabis, it's really is good to see that overall, we're up 13%. And that bodes well. And as Supervisor Adams was talking about, it's being the fourth largest agricultural county in the state. But what I always find really interesting is that we're actually the fourth largest agricultural county in the country. And that's, you know, really, really says a lot about what drives this county and the people that work into it and the ingenuity and the hard work put forth by those who work in the fields. I also really, really appreciate the fine detail onto here on different crops. And, you know, even I can look here on page 14 at miscellaneous nursery products and see, you know, you have a little number there, 15. And I look under it, and there, you know, sort of asterisked out is even Christmas trees. So you're getting really into detail if you're putting in Christmas trees. So it's, but overall, it's a great report from honey to everything, and I really, really appreciate it.
Sure. Supervisor Askew.
Just a big acknowledgement to you for compiling the information. I remember, you know, I basically grew up here, and at some point, someone said, well, you know, most of the lettuce that makes its way around the entire world comes from right here. But I just remember being shocked by that information. And I think this report and the press conference that you put out, I think it's just a good reminder for all of us that, you know, we feed the world. We feed, you know, nutritious, good, healthy food to not just our state, not just our county, not just our nation, but like, we really, truly do feed the world. And I was at the airport in Austin yesterday and had a spinach salad and sitting at the bar, and the guy next to me sat down. And we had a whole conversation about, you know, Salinas Valley and agriculture. And I think we can all be proud of what we do here. And echo my colleagues' comments about making sure that we're including our workforce and the team, the folks who are actually out there doing the work to make Monterey County the place that it is. Thank you.
I noticed, I just noticed as well, under that footnote on page 14, footnote 15, there is a commodity that I think we should really focus on a lot more. It could be very helpful to us. And that is, and I'm quoting here, "the money tree." Have no idea what that is, but we need to grow a little more of it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ag Commissioner Idalgo. Appreciate your presentation, and this is a fine report. I just want to echo what some of my colleagues had said. Great report, great information. Certainly, seeing our cannabis industry go, if it was its own conventional crop, last year it was at the number three spot, and now bumping down to the number six spot in comparison to the traditional crops that we have grown in Monterey County. Still sizable, but certainly got, as you said, a reduction in 54% of its crop value. But just for the future, I thought some of the points that were made, I know some years we have highlighted workers in the crop report, but just having a designated spot to acknowledge the workforce and how many workers are there? Because when we talk about crops in this report, when we omit the people who harvest them out every single day of the week practically, then I think we're missing something on our picture. And I think it shows what our values are when we at least have a portion of the crop report, just highlighting how many workers, workers make up our ag industry, that they're so pivotal to the backbone of the industry, obviously. And I think it's important to just show appreciation for them. The other thing I thought would be good to include is our ranking, where we compare to the other top ag counties in California. And as you properly pointed out, you know, Tulare and Fresno, among others, have always been the top three, but we're right behind it. And just for our residents to see where our county ranks with the other big ag counties, I mean, we're up there in the top five, and that's something to kind of be proud of as well. And the fact that there's been some growth this year, I think it's a testament to having a vibrant industry in the aftermath of the pandemic. So just some things to consider for next year, but having some of those things reflected in the values of this crop report, I think would be important. And some things that we could highlight that would let our community know how important ag is to not only California, but to the nation. And I think those other top three ag counties that are above us are, I think, top three in the nation. So for us to be right behind them is something, I think, significant. But if there's no other comments, let's take it for comments from the public on the crop report for 2022. Any public comments? We'll allow it two minutes.
I just have a brief question, actually. I didn't read the report, but I'm curious to know that if, since the commencement of the cannabis industry, how the nursery and flower crop, has it increased or decreased or stayed the same? I'd just like to know that.
Good question. We'll have our ag commissioner respond to any public comments at the end. Anyone else in chambers? Anyone else online? Okay. Mr. Doggy, you got any answer for that?
Yes, Chair. So for our nursery industry, it has remained relatively stable. So we haven't seen any changes, reduction. We saw certainly a lot of reduction back in the 90s and 80s because of imported flowers that took a lot of our growers out of production. But, and then with cannabis, you know, we saw some changes there. But there was also, when cannabis came in, there was the opportunity that we had a lot of greenhouses that were not being utilized. So they ended up, you know, reusing those greenhouses. But in the last, I would say, two or three years, there's been stability with our nursery growers, so that's good to see.
Thank you. Now, I'll bring this back for the board for further discussions and perhaps.
Yes, just a few comments moving forward. We know that this last year's winter was extremely hard on the region, especially this industry. Yesterday, I was flying home as well, and looking down on the valley, I could see a lot of the continued areas that have not been able to be put back into production for this year. So I just, you know, setting the tone for moving forward, I'm very curious about what next year will look like in this particular report. But the other is, I recently read a report that stated clearly that in the next 20 years, we're going to have to be prepared to produce two to three times as much product on the same amount of ground that we're currently farming throughout the world in order to feed the growing population. And so it's, we've risen to that challenge over the decades in this valley of producing more with less resources and tighter ground. And I, last week, had the opportunity with the head of Public Works and the entire division of Public Works Facilities and Parks, Randy Ishi, to visit a farm where we were looking at one issue, but right next door was one of the Carbon, I'm gonna blame the company's full name, but it's Carbon, the company whose lasers are burning weeds assisting in some of that thinning in the field. And so as we move forward, I think some sort of a report on not just the workforce, but also the latest technologies would be interesting. And perhaps how much is being invested in those new technologies so that we know what's necessary to achieve what not just folks in Monterey County, but folks around the world need, which is access to those healthy and safe foods and vegetables. But thank you again for the report.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? So this is just to receive the 2022 Annual County Monterey Crop and Livestock Report. The ag commissioners, no motion needed today. I want to thank you, Commissioner, Ag Commissioner Idalgo, for all your hard work and your leadership.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you very much. And with that, everyone, we're going to recess to lunch. We'll be back at 1:30, and we got quite a few items on that agenda. So enjoy your lunch.
Hello. Alright. Good. Good. Uh, good.
Mic sixteen.
Good.
Microphone ten.
Good.
Mic fifteen.
Good.
Mic nine, mic nine.
Good.